I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, held January nineteenth, twenty sixteen, six P. M. at the council chambers. Deputy Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pratt?
Here.
Councilmember Delling?
Here.
Councilmember Alinsky?
Here.
Councilmember Hargie?
Here.
Councilmember Garrison?
Here.
And Vice Mayor Pfeiffer is absent.
Okay. Thank you. So next, we have Ashton Bylett-Kleen to come up and say the pledge of allegiance. And when you get done, Ashton, if you want to come up to the middle of the floor here, so I'll have a certificate for you. And then after the pledge, he was a winner in the VFW Veteran of Foreign Wars Post Seventy Four Hundred Pen and Patriot Contest. And he's going to share his speech with us. So if you all rise to say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So if you want to share your essay.
Have you ever considered what a life would be like if we didn't have freedom? We tend to take freedom for granted, so freedom is not free. Tennessee Williams said, "Hatebirds accept each other, but fighters have their own." To me, this means that people can accept being the same if they would like to be individual. Freedom gives us the ability to have equal chances and be different people in the way we express ourselves. The First Amendment of the U. S. Constitution states, "The Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or breaching the freedom of speech, or the press, or the right of the people to peace of the assembled, and to petition the government for repressive grievances." This means that we can practice any religion we want, say anything we want, and do any protest we want. This is important because if we didn't have this right, we could be forced to know any religion, forced to stop practicing our religion, and be arrested for saying the wrong thing. Freedom of expression is very important. Every country has limitations on freedom, some with more than others, and some with no freedom at all. In America, even though we have lots of freedom, we must have limitations, making laws and restrictions on driving, school, and employment. For example, you cannot drive until you're sixteen, and you cannot get paid for a job until you're sixteen. We may have a lot of freedom, but there must be limits to maintain order. There have been countless events to bring about freedom, such as the Revolutionary War, the Civil War, and the Civil Rights Movement. These events were triggered by people wanting freedom. The Revolutionary War was important because we didn't want to be in the British rule. The Civil War, because we were freeing slaves, and the Civil Rights Movement, because people wanted everyone to have equal rights. These events have given us the freedom we have today. In conclusion, freedom is the reason that we all live different lives, and it gives us the opportunity to be individual. The First Amendment says that we have the freedom of speech and religion, and the government cannot take that away from us. Freedom is not free, and we should never take it for granted.
Thank you so much. So Ashton, do you want to share where you go to school and what grade that you're in?
I go to Yavapai Preparatory, I'm in seventh grade here.
All right. Great job on your essay. Appreciate it. So, on behalf of the Cottonwood City Council, we'd like to give you the certificate of citizenship. Good citizenship. You're welcome. Okay. The next item is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartasch.
Madam Mayor, council members, most importantly, for those who may not know, Glenn Frye of the Eagles died. What a tragedy. Next Tuesday night, Matforce is holding a community discussion on the problem with heroin. And the public's invited, it is a community conversation about heroin. This year, actually twenty fifteen, there were fourteen overdose deaths in Yavapai County. And so Matforce is interested in putting together some strategies to educate and prevent people from using heroin. So if you have any ideas, come and join us. And that'll be at the Public Safety Building. It'll start at five o'clock and go until seven. We have a new police chief starting tomorrow, and he, we will be doing a meet and greet with the new police chief on Tuesday night, the twenty-sixth. Wait, I'm getting that mixed up. On Wednesday night, the twenty-seventh. Got a busy week next week during the nights. So on the twenty-sixth Tuesday is that community conversation on heroin. On the twenty-seventh, from six to eight, is the, Meet the Chief, Meet the New Police Chief, again at the Public Safety Building. And that is from five to seven. The community conversation is from six to eight. So now that I've totally confused everybody. Tuesday night, it's from six to eight. That's the community conversation. Wednesday night is five to seven, and that's Meet the New Police Chief. And those for you, those of you who are interested in volleyball, we are taking registration for adult coed volleyball at the recreation center. So if you have an interest, get on down there and sign up. And that's it, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Council members? Mr. Pratt?
Yavapai College started its spring two thousand and sixteen semester today, and it's still not too late to register for classes. You can still register through Thursday for full semester classes, and we do have a lot of late start classes. Just click onto yc.edu and come on up and join us. As well, we're having a art opening Thursday night from, I believe it's five to seven on the Verdi Valley campus. And the featured artists are all faculty, art faculty at the college, so it should be pretty interesting. Again, we invite the public to come on up and see what we do up there.
Yes.
I'll pile onto the Yavapai College train tomorrow morning at eight-thirty in M-137, which is the community room at the Clarkville Campus. We'll be having the Yavapai College Governing Board Advisory Committee meeting, and the presentation will be by Yavapai College's Director of Hospitality, I believe, in talking about the new hospitality program and the culinary program that they're putting together. So if you have some interest in what they're doing and how they're planning that and what it's going to look like, please come on up and watch the discussion. That's it.
Anybody else? Okay. I attended the Governor's Council on Aging on January eighth, and the, whoops, got something that popped up there. The Arizona Caregiver Coalition would like to share that, about the introduction of bills HB two forty, twenty-four sixty, and HB twenty-four sixty-one, sponsored by Representative Kate Brophy McGee and Representative Heather Carter for the Arizona Lifespan Respite Care Program as of one fifteen twenty sixteen. HB twenty-four sixty, sixty appropriates two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the State General Fund for Fiscal Year Twenty Sixteen, Twenty Seventeen for the Lifespan Respite Care Program. HB twenty-four sixty-one modifies to extend the Lifespan Respite Care Program to twenty twenty-five. In addition, both bills have a word edit to include who do not currently receive other publicly funded respite services. And anybody who has cared for a person with Alzheimer's or dementia or any kind of physical disabilities understands how important it is for that caregiver to get a little respite care. So this is a bill that I could support. On the fourteenth, we'll have, oh, on the January eleventh, the Verdi Valley Mayors, Managers, Supervisors, and Yavapai Apache Nation all met. We meet twice a year to talk about issues in our communities. And one of the main things we discussed at this meeting was the homeless issue. And the City of Cottonwood donated two thousand dollars to the One Night One Person Program through Catholic Charities. And we have, it was a good discussion. We talked about the Better Bucks Program. I know that our police department has been working with the Flagstaff Police Department to create a Better Bucks Program in the Verdi Valley, Cottonwood and the Verdi Valley. And so we talked about that. We had a speaker there from, from Flagstaff. And other homeless issues, and how we could all work together as communities. And I asked the city managers, the mayors and city managers, to commit a person for a meeting of the coalition, which is every other month, it was at quarterly. I think it's quarterly.
Quarterly for the coalition.
And so to ask that they would send a staff member, it's just an hour, hour and a half. And I talked to Catholic charities, and a couple of cities did send someone to the last meeting. So hopefully we can keep that dialogue going. On the fourteenth, there'll be an awards, or on the fourteenth, there was an award ceremony for officers of the Cottonwood Police Department and civilian employees. I attended the National Association for Women Business Owners in Sedona, and we heard from S.E.O. Essential Solutions, which is a business about social media for businesses. And today, I attended the Professional Women's Group, and the speaker was Jane Powers, and she's a business coach, and she helps entrepreneurs speak, sell, soar, and specializing in mastering your message and moving past the fears of speaking and selling. That was very interesting. Have a lot of entrepreneurial women here in the Verdi Valley who attended. And later, the city manager and I spoke with the Verdi Valley Medical Center's leaders, Rob Thames, Sue Maiden, and Rick Peterson, and we shared updates on what's happening in the city and vice versa. So it was a nice, busy week again. Yes?
I forgot one item. The Verdi Valley Forum was previously the Sedona Forum. They'll be putting on a forum at Cliff Castle Casino in March, and they are accepting applications. The, the focus of the forum this year will be on post-secondary educational opportunities in the Verdi Valley. It'll be a three-day forum. They're bringing in some pretty high-power keynote speakers. It's being sponsored or helped with by the Morrison Institute out of A.S.U. So they're really looking to open up the dialogue about the education system as it works today, and where they see it going in the future, and how it can fit into the needs of the Verdi Valley. So if you have any interest in participating in that forum, they are looking for people to help from, or to participate from every corner of the Verdi Valley. If you just go to verdivallyforum, bbforum.org, they have the application online. You can fill it out, send it in, and we are taking applications through the end of this month. And then we'll be sending out acceptance letters, or, anyway, accepting that people that apply in or participate, and hopefully we'll have a great forum. So if you have any interest, all, please fill out the form.
And it's a hard week because the Verdi Valley SciTech Festival is that same week.
It's a busy week.
But it, it is. If you would like to apply, and we hope that many of you will, you can find information online at www.vvforum.org.
Thank you.
Okay. Introduction of New Employees.
Mayor and council, today we have a, not really a new employee to the City of Cottonwood, but it's a new to us administrative services, new employee. As, as you may recall, we lost Mary to the city manager's office, and we went and started looking around for someone that would be able to replace her, maybe a good fit in our Administrative Services Department. She may be back there. Just, she was born in San Diego, California, moved to Cottonwood in nineteen ninety-seven. She'd been married for eight years. She has two children, Cameron, and six, and daughter Brooke, three. She's been working for the city for a little over a year now. She started at the Utilities Department on November two thousand and fourteen, and she applied to the position of Administrative Services, Administrative Assistant at the Finance and H.R. Offices, and she came on board last month. She enjoys photography, reading movies, and spending time with the family. And we're really glad she's come on board, and she's taken to our offices really, really well.
Madam Mayor, council members, like Rudy said, I've been with the city for a little over a year now, and I'm really excited to get to be a part of the Finance and H.R. Department. They seem like a very great group of people, and I know I'm going to learn a lot. And thank you all very much for the opportunity to, to work with the City of Cottonwood, and it's a very nice group of people, and you all work very hard, so thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck in continuing to serve the citizens of Cottonwood and the Verdi Valley. Appreciate you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Presentations. The first one is a presentation regarding City of Cottonwood becoming a designated city of peace. And who is leading this conversation today? If you would come up and introduce yourselves.
Hello, I'm Kanita Wilson.
I'm Victoria Gonzalez.
I'm Makia Lutmasia.
I'm Kenya Harris.
These are all students from Mountain View Preparatory. We're part of the Interact Club, which is sponsored by Rotary of the Verdi Valley, and have a Mac. So I don't think we can show our presentation, but we made copies for the council, so the girls will pass them out.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
So you can't, like a Mac can't play if you have, it's got to be totally...
I didn't bring my adapter.
Okay.
Can I get one over here, please?
That's too bad the public can't see it, too.
What grades are these, again?
I'm sorry.
Can I get one of these, do you have another? No. That's okay.
I have, I have the book. I have that book.
Okay. I'm, we're all in seventh grade.
Pardon? Yes, go ahead. Okay, so everyone's in seventh grade. So tell us a little bit, so the public doesn't have the presentation. So if you could, we also have people watching us on television who are wanting to learn about your program. So if you could just share off the top of your heads, or your notes, or whatever you have there, information that you would like us to know about it.
So we're students from the Interact Club at Mountain View Preparatory. Our club is sponsored by Rotary Club. We have around twenty-five, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders from our school. We have raised six, we have raised six hundred dollars for polio, over one thousand food items for holiday food drives, six hundred articles of clothes in the winter clothing drive, which both of those went to the Old Town Mission. Our goal is to make Cottonwood an international city of peace. A few steps to reach our goal would be continue working closely with the Sedona International City of Peace, create a vision for our group, and create a website.
Peace Assembly at MVP, which was on December tenth, twenty fifteen. The assembly was amazing. We had two foreign exchange students that were sharing where they are from, from, and they were from India and Tanzania. They shared some facts about their countries. For the MVP students, we held an individual poster contest. Each class made a banner showing without words what peace around the world looks like. The winner of the poster contest was a young lady from seventh grade. During the assembly, we discussed our definitions of peace, some potential barriers to peace, and passed out cards asking students to be involved in helping our society become an international city of peace.
What would happen if Cottonwood was, was a city, what would happen if Cottonwood was a city of peace? Potential ideas: music events, peace camp lectures, mediation center, peace museum, International Day of Peace on September twenty-first, peace art gallery, peace tree day on June first. And definition of peace. We define peace as a form of freedom from disturbance, tranquility among people living together in a community, showing tolerance towards and acceptance of different genders, races, religions, and opinions.
What we need from you. We would really appreciate if you could support us making Cottonwood an international city of peace. We want people in the city to feel that we embrace peace and that we encourage others to do acts that are peaceful. And then, we would like to thank the council for listening to our presentation and for any support you can give in our endeavor to make Cottonwood an international city of peace.
Okay.
Thank you.
And teacher's name, or the...
Oh, my name's Susanna Venturri. I sponsor the Interact Club.
Okay. And did you already tell me that? I just didn't remember that you did.
I don't think I did.
Okay. Susanna?
I told them they had to do it on their own, so I'm just here to support.
Okay.
This was all their, their idea.
All right. So do you have any questions, council, for the students from Mountain View Preparatory?
Just want to applaud you for your efforts.
Yes. We're very proud of you. We always...
We just wanted to share our information and let you know that we were going to be working on it.
You're working on this.
Hopefully, we'll be back with more.
You'll come back later if you need a resolution or something of that sort, too.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for being here tonight. We really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay. So tonight is a night of our youth, and I am so proud to be able to be in a community where our youth take an active role in government, and an active role in bringing their ideas to the city council. Appreciate that very much. So tonight, we have members of the Yavapai Anti-Tobacco Coalition, also called YAZI of Youth, Coalition of Youth, Tobacco Twenty-One Movement, to increase the age from eighteen to twenty-one to legally purchase tobacco products. So if the students would like to introduce themselves, and also your leaders...
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council, for having us today. My name is Sophia. I am president of YAZI, Yavapai Anti-Tobacco Coalition of Youth, and I am here with Gunner Tillmans, the vice president, and Janey Cervantes, the secretary, along with some members of our group and some advisors. The first thing I have to give to you is a folder containing facts and letters of support. And we also have a presentation to show you guys.
Okay. And Gunner Tillmans is also the president of the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission. And are any of you on the commission, I'm thinking he's of this group? Okay.
But I am also looking for...
To apply?
To apply.
Excellent.
You might need, you might need a little help here.
So some of you guys might recognize our group from a couple of years ago, when we came to you guys and talked to you guys about having designated smoking areas in the parks. And a couple of the members here today were also there during that day.
And you were successful.
We were successful.
Yes. So it's youth leadership at its finest. And I would like to introduce Jen Mayberry. She hasn't introduced herself yet, but she is with the Yavapai County Community Health Services and has been working with the students at Mingus High School.
Yes, ma'am.
And YAZI, so thanks for being here tonight. You can also watch a presentation about this on verdivellytv.com, or you can see it on YouTube. You could just put in Cottonwood, YAZI, or Tobacco Twenty-One and probably get, it's on the Inside Cottonwood Show with Yavapai Broadcasting.
With a member of our coalition, Alyssa Mannion.
Yes, Alyssa.
Sadly couldn't make it today.
She did a great job for you. Okay.
So we are here to talk to you guys about increasing the tobacco sale age from eighteen to twenty-one. This is an emerging policy that is happening all throughout the nation, and even Hawaii has an interesting thing that comes to it that I will introduce later on. But first, let me remind you of some of tobacco's toll in the U.S. Tobacco's the leading cause of death, well, leading preventable cause of death, which is killing more than four hundred and eighty thousand people each year. Each year, more than two thousand eight hundred kids try their first cigarette every day, and seven hundred of these other kids become regular daily smokers. And one-third of these people will die from smoking-related diseases. Two thousand, twenty-one thousand six hundred kids who are under the age of eighteen will try the cigarettes for the first time each year, and five thousand five hundred additional kids will become regular daily smokers. And nine out of ten, or ninety percent, of these lifetime smokers started smoking before the age of eighteen. One hundred and fifteen thousand kids alive in state today will ultimately die from smoking, given the current smoking levels. And one hundred and seventy billion dollars is spent by the nation for healthcare costs. Two point three eight billion dollars is spent by just Arizona. Imagine what we could do with all that money. We could spend it on the homeless care centers, or hospitals, or we can even use that money to, to buy much-needed school supplies.
I ask you, why raise the age? Well, first, we got to crunch the numbers. No, I'm just kidding. This is simple math. Raising the, raising the age to twenty-one will dramatically reduce tobacco use. Just two percent of, two percent of sales help reduce ninety percent of new smokers. Cigarette sales of those under twenty-one count for only two percent of total sales. But because ninety percent of smokers start by the age of twenty-one, these are the very cells that lead to nine out of every ten new smokers. This means that the impact on store owners will be minimal, and a very small percentage of the tobacco sales in the short term. This little equation that we have up there on the screen means that raising the age to twenty-one can reduce smoking rates to a single digit. Let me explain. Only ten percent of smokers start by the age of twenty-one or older, and if the current smoking rate is about twenty percent, then by simple math, if someone reaches the age of twenty-one... of twenty-one as a non-smoker, that individual only has a two percent chance of becoming a smoker. Clear as mud? Trust me.
[laughing]
Ah, more math. I'm just kidding. Many people who purchase for minors are eighteen to twenty-one. Basically, this means that kids still know each other, and it's easy to have a friend make that tobacco purchase for you. Age increase strategy is already working. Take Needleham, Massachusetts, for example. In two thousand and five, Needleham voted to raise and enforce the minimum tobacco sale age to twenty-one, and in two thousand and six, before full enforcement, the town had a youth smoking rate of thirteen percent compared to fifteen percent in the surrounding communities. By two thousand and ten, the youth smoking rate in Needleham was down to six point seven percent, while surrounding communities' rate only decreased to twelve point four. The percent decline in youth smoking rate in Needleham was nearly triple that of its neighbors.
The vulnerable teen brain. So, the brains, the prefrontal lobe, it is used to make decisions, as you can see. Human judgment is not developed until the age of twenty-five. Studies showed a thin gap between when we're physiologically mature and neurobiologically mature. It could be as much as a forty-seven year difference. During this time period, the brain is highly vulnerable, which means that we could fall easier into bandwagon peer pressure when it comes to smoking. As you can see, ninety-nine percent of lifetime smokers started smoking before the age of twenty-six. Explaining the age of initiation of tobacco significantly prevents a lifetime of addiction. Tobacco industries knew this. Philip Morris said, "Raising the legal minimum age for cigarette purchasers to twenty-one could gut our key young adult market." As you can see up here, this is our support for Tobacco Twenty-One. There are never smokers, former smokers, and current smokers. As you can see up there, almost seventy percent of current smokers want Tobacco Twenty-One to be a thing. As you can see up here, this is our local support. During Verdi River Days in twenty fifteen, we passed out about two hundred surveys, trying to get information of what people thought, and majority of the people said that cigarettes are harmful. Americans and Tobacco Twenty-One, as you can see up there, thirty-five percent of people oppose Tobacco Twenty-One, but there's a seventy-five percent of people favorite Tobacco
Aloha, Hawaii. As I said during the introduction, Hawaii did an amazing thing during this emerging, with this emerging policy, and that thing is that they raised the whole entire state's age limit from eighteen to twenty-one. On June nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen, Hawaii Governor David Ege signed the bill raising the minimum legal sale age for tobacco products to twenty-one. Governor Ege stated, "Raising the minimum age as part of our comprehensive tobacco control efforts will help reduce tobacco use among our youth and increase the likelihood that our kiki, or children, will grow up to be tobacco-free." And there is now over one hundred cities across the country who have raised the age to twenty-one. Imagine what the difference could be in Cottonwood if we could make that emerging, emerging policy happen.
Arguments you may hear, one of these is, "We'll just go out of business," and they won't. Remember the math? Only two percent of sales come from eighteen to twenty-one-year-olds, leaving ninety-eight percent of the market still there. CVS and Target stopped selling, leaving more sales at convenience stores, and when Needleham increased the age in two thousand and five, not a single store went out of business. We're probably thinking it'll just go to other towns, but they won't. Lower smoking rates are better for business. A city or town that creates fewer smokers will have a higher socioeconomic status, better health status, better jobs, better quality of life for all residents. Research has shown that a minimal retail impact of raising the age of twenty-one, in fact, in two thousand and five in Needleham, there was no evidence for youth traveling to other towns for tobacco purchase. Small decrease in youth access to retail tobacco are strongly associated with lower tobacco use. Key point is that the youth will quit or use less tobacco, and those who don't smoke are less likely to. Now, here's a big one. If you can go to war at eighteen, you should be able to smoke, right? I say no. The minimum age of military service does not equal the readiness to enlist in a lifetime of smoking. In fact, the U.S. Army surgeon general says soldiers who smoke are less combat-ready and take longer time to heal. The U.S. military is taking steps to ban tobacco sales on base, and ease of access has led to a thirty-three percent increase in smoking. Veterans who have served to protect our freedom but contracted emphysema from addiction to discounted cigarettes in military have lost their freedom. And the most compelling argument comes from the tobacco industry itself. Raising the legal minimum age for cigarette purchase to twenty-one could gut our key young adult market, where we sell about twenty-five billion cigarettes and enjoy seventy percent of the market share. They know their market, but I think it's time we listen.
Why? Because I matter. Why? Because we matter.
Why? Because I matter.
Why? Because I matter.
Because I matter.
Why? Because I matter.
Why? Because I matter.
Because I matter.
It's, this is something that can affect all of us in our own different ways, and it kind of makes me sad that we didn't start this earlier on. Like, with my parents, both of them started smoking before the age of sixteen, and recently, my mother quit, but my dad is still smoking. So, but he is on his way to quitting. If they started, like, after the age of twenty-one, then they probably wouldn't even be addicted to tobacco.
As you can see, Madam Mayor, council, this matters to all of us. I have a few friends that are actually addicted to cigarettes. I have told them countless times before that it damages, it does a lot of damage to you, but they don't understand. So, I'm trying to get them to learn, and slowly, one of my friends, she's trying really hard to quit, but it's just really difficult for her. So, hopefully, Tobacco Twenty-One will help her understand that it's better to quit.
When I was in freshman high school, and even now, when you walk into the restrooms, you know, you always see and smell smoke, and my freshman year, you know, I just ignored it, you know, keep moving. But I had Sophia here that dragged me into YaZi, and when I joined, I knew that's where I needed to be, and I knew that this is how I could help prevent that. And I just wanted to say thank you for listening to us, and...
And as the group of YaZi, or Yavapai Anti-Tobacco Coalition of Youth, we request the necessary steps to create a new city ordinance that moves the age increase from eighteen to twenty-one and that it takes to legally purchase tobacco, which includes e-cigarettes.
And I just want the council to know that we did have a discussion about whether it was legal to do this, and even the attorney general came through and said that we can't change the tax structure for cigarettes, but that there's nothing preventing a city or a town from changing the legal age of being able to purchase tobacco products. So... So, any input to the students, and could we get the lights? Are you done with the presentation? So, any input to the youth on the next steps? Are you interested? Are you not interested?
Yeah.
The next step is to start to look into passing an ordinance that supports this.
Thank you.
I think that's the next step.
Mr. Garrison, so, council's consensus is go ahead, and if the city manager and the city attorney, if necessary, would work with this group to prepare an ordinance to bring to the council for consideration. And at that time, the public will again be able to comment, and we'll ask for comments today also.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Very good.
Are there any members of the public who would like to address this topic before we move on? I think from the applause that I get the, I get the point that I think you're supportive, so. Okay, thank you very much, Tobacco Twenty-One, for being here tonight. All right, great job. Okay, certificate of appreciation to the mayor and council from the American Legion Riders District Eight. We have John Moffett with us tonight, and maybe you can introduce everyone else.
Mayor and council, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to address the council. I have with me tonight John Lynn and John McDowell from ALR ninety-three, Camp Verdi. We have our new district rep, a certificate signed by our previous district rep who left office about two, three weeks ago. Our new district rep, Sean Krierner, from ALR one forty in Prescott Valley. And my name is John Moffett. I'm from the ALR, American Legion Riders, and Post Six, Prescott. Thanks in great part to the generosity of Cottonwood City Council. District Eight American Legion Riders served one hundred and eighty-six patients and staff at our annual VA barbecue in October at the Prescott VA. We had some money left over from our fundraising for the VA barbecue, which included some monies that you had kindly donated, and with that leftover money, we helped fund our District Eight ALR Christmas program for the patients at the VA. At that program, the ALR Legion Riders from District Eight distributed one hundred and thirty-two Christmas stockings with candy and goodies valued at over eight hundred dollars to our patients at the Prescott VA.
Great work, you guys. You're awesome.
And so are you, Mayor and council, for your annual donation to us. In light of that, we do have a certificate of appreciation. The Department of Arizona District Eight American Legion Riders gratefully present the certificate of appreciation to Mayor Jones, the city council, and city of Cottonwood, in sincere appreciation for your continued support of the veterans in our community, and for your kind donation to our annual barbecue for the patients and staff at the Prescott VA on October twelfth, two thousand and fifteen, dated the seventh day of December, two thousand and fifteen, took me a while to get out here, by the American Legion Riders, Chapter Six, Prescott, twenty-five, Cottonwood, forty, Chino Valley, seventy-eight, Dewey Humboldt, ninety-three, Camp Verdi, one oh eight, Prescott Valley, and one forty, Prescott Valley, all in District Eight, Department of Arizona. And it's signed by Clarence S. Scott, our District Eight AZALR representative at the time. And again, thank you, Mayor and council, and you, you guys deserve an applause.
Well, thank you very much. You want us to come up, and, so, council wants to come up and accept this?
And as Mr. Moffett said, I am very proud of, of working with my colleagues on the council. They are extremely supportive of multiple veterans' programs and veterans' issues. No, so we...
We're a member.
So, I'd just like to thank my colleagues for your support. They're always there for Thank you.
Thank you.
We do. Yes, so, the thirtieth of March to the second of April.
We'll be back, Mayor, in the summer of this year.
Okay, we'll see you then.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, our next item is a presentation, "Living from the Heart Volunteer Recruitment Event and Request for City Sponsorship." And we have with us tonight Lansing Day, and he did write up a request from the city, which I'm sure everyone has read, and if you just want to kind of review that a little bit for the public and our television audience...
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. Quite a pleasure here to be presenting this project. I've been in Cottonwood, living in the city for two years, and in that time, have enjoyed being semi-retired and volunteering about town at the Humane Society, and also at the Senior Center, participating in the Meals and Wheels program.
Thank you for volunteering. That's so important.
Thank you. What has come to my attention in those two experiences and elsewhere, doing some other volunteering with music around town, is that there really is a dire need for more volunteers to be stepping forward and considering helping. And this project, Living from the Heart, really comes from that experience, personal experience of being a volunteer on the inside and, and hearing that message. I began this journey heading to Chamber of Commerce Building, and I found good information there. A gentleman behind the counter said that this is something that the city has been on to for a while, and he thought the pump would be primed, you might say, to begin to move on it. And so, I got a name, Iris Dobler, I believe.
Yes, our human resources director.
Is she here?
I don't think so tonight.
And I began over there. I was seated with her. We spoke for about an hour, and she took me and sat in her office, and we began to brainstorm ideas. And immediately, she said to me that the recreation center will provide free space, and that was really how it got launched, the idea. And from there, developing a list, which is, can still grow beyond Youth Center, Teen Center, Verdi Valley Medical Center, Senior Center, Humane Society, and a few others.
I have one request for an addition. Steps to Recovery Homes.
Steps to Recovery?
Yes, they were an excellent entity that's...
It'll be important in the initial planning stages to, to get that question out and really solicit the community.
There'll be lots more, I'm sure.
So, no one's left out. It's very important.
Right.
So, that giving specific details, I really haven't announced this at all to any of these organizations I'm involved with personally, so I understand this is really the first time that the public is being aware of the project. So, rather than going specific details that you have in your letter about the structure, I would just simply say we have a fixed date, which is, will be Friday, March eighteenth. Iris confirmed that date, and from five until seven P.M., and there'll be a setup time where presenters can come in and set up their table. And we're looking for, I'll be looking for music from youth in Cottonwood. I, myself, am a certified Montessori elementary teacher. I was, they're gone, really impressed.
Aren't you? That's...
Oh, boy, yeah.
Yeah, great leaders.
So, let's go with the youth and put them out front in featuring this notion, Living from the Heart, and get some music from youth. So, that's the plan. The other is to have an enticement, a non-alcoholic enticement of chocolate. There's caffeine in there, certainly. And each table, each presenter will, will be invited to prepare or have available some chocolate morsels. And then, the one-on-one contact would be important. From the, from the point of view of, of the organizations, I am going to gently nudge, because I personally am on the inside of two of them, to see if they can offer something special in the way of some easy route for whoever might come to their table to go through the, the application process. Maybe there's a fee involved. I know, for example, at... I know, for example, at the Senior Center, to be a part of the Meals and Wheels program, it requires that you get a fingerprint ID, and there is a cost of $60 for that. So without divulging too much publicly, part of the project will be on the service provider's side, again, I'm going to encourage, is to make that way easy. And so, let's see, questions, I guess, can we?
Questions?
Council members, mayor?
Would there be, asking our city attorney?
Endorsements, so.
Right. Are there any legal issues with us endorsing this wonderful idea? I mean, such as insurance, because we endorsed it, or anything of that sort?
I don't think so, ma'am.
Okay, that's good, I'm happy to hear that. That's unusual.
Can we get that in writing?[664.12][664.12](LAUGHING).
Any questions?
I think it's a terrific idea, and we do have so many people in the city willing to volunteer for events. I bet just publicizing it and getting the city behind it would get the word out there.
Get the word out, and you see in the letter how I plan to do that through media and through direct inter-community newsletters and such.
I was just sharing with him how important volunteerism is in the city, because the number of volunteers we have, in some years, we've calculated would cost the city $200,000 or thereabouts to pay for those employees or volunteers.
Every time we have events, we get a large number of volunteers step up, and I also agree with Mayor on the steps to recovery homes. They've done a lot of good for our city and have a good mission.
Wonderful, yes.
Yeah, I think it's a great, a great concept. I'm just curious, is this something you plan on doing year after year? Or do you hope to do it year after year, to refresh everyone's memory about what services are available and keep yourself...
I'm looking forward to inviting anyone to step forward to help in this project, and whatever energy is created, let the ball roll on its own. But yes, I'm hopeful that this can be a beginning of something that maybe even would result in some regular space in the newspaper for some kind of volunteer cheering section to do whatever they might do. And possibly on the electric bill, something like that, just really kind of saturate. I think there are people that want to help, and I'm not sure, I think maybe just inviting them and then, and providing some information would regularly would get them just to make that first step, first phone call. So yes.
Okay, great.
So I guess it's not, we don't have, I mean, it's not agendized to vote, but is consensus or direction?
Madam Mayor, if you'd like to direct staff to come to you with a resolution?
Okay. So that, and he wants to do this in March, so we would have time to bring it to the February 2nd meeting. Okay? So I think, is that what's on your mind, council members?
I think a resolution of support would be...
Okay, so if you would please, staff, create a resolution of support for Mr. Lanning's efforts. Mr. Days, Lanzing Day?
Yes.
Okay, Lanzing E. Day. Thank you very much, and thank you for volunteering and caring about all these organizations that are very worthy.
I'm excited to get one.
All right, very cool. All right, the next item is the call to the public, if you would like to speak, there's a form. Yes, ma'am? So, pardon?
Do you need to vote?
Okay, yes. So you would need, if, okay. So what this is about is if there's something not on the agenda. So this portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action per ARS 3843102H. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. So if this is something that's not on our agenda, we would like you to fill out a form, and you'll be allowed to speak. So we have a form filled out, "Speak to Council" by Jody Fanning.
Madam Mayor, council members, I just wanted to take a few minutes and have to call the public, because I did not want to be on the agenda. As you know, this will be my last night as your police chief. Tomorrow you get a new one, and it'll be my last address to the council. So I wanted to take a moment to come up here and to personally thank the council members that have supported me throughout my career here with the city of Cottonwood. When I started here, to basically everybody telling me that I was a runaway juvenile till today, it's been an amazing, amazing time, and I wanted to thank the council members that have supported me during my career, and then especially thank you for your support and your belief in me to be your police chief. Your police force is amazing, and I'm certain that Chief Gazelle tomorrow, when he starts working with them, we'll see just how amazing they are. There's some very special people up there in the comm center and on the police force. So I just wanted to personally thank each and every one of you. Mr. Ilinski, I wanted to say thank you to you. I know some days we did not personally see eye to eye on some of our events, however, I do appreciate the fact that you were not afraid to ask me the hard questions and show you why we did what we did and what we needed. So I really appreciated that.
Thank you.
And I appreciated your support.
Thank you.
Mr. Dowling, I truly appreciated you. Again, as with all, I didn't always agree with decisions, but I know that your decisions were what you felt in your heart, and I can always respect that when a man believes in his heart. So I really appreciate that. I also wanted to say I really appreciate what I see you doing at the high schools with our youth. I believe it's incredibly important for our leaders to be involved, so thank you very much. Mr. Pratt, it's a no-brainer, you're a great guy to work for. I truly, truly appreciate everything that you've done. I fully endorse you as you go forward, and I get, you have my endorsement as you go forward for mayor. I truly believe that you will have, you could help our city again continue it on. Not that our mayor is bad, but yes, I know that she has to leave. So thank you very much for your support, and both personally and professionally, thank you very much. Mr. Garrison?
Thank you.
I started under your father. He was a council member that was here when I started, and then I feel very blessed that I get to leave with you as a council member. One of the things that I've learned through from your father and from you is to pay attention to the little details. I don't know how many times your father would find streetlights out in the middle of the night that I had not found, and make sure that my sergeant was aware that I did not find the streetlight out. And while I may have mumbled things under my breath about my, that council member at the time, it did teach me a lot about paying attention to the small details, because it's important to somebody somewhere. So I thank you for your, on your father's behalf, and for you, to you, for your support, and I hope, I wish you the best in your upcoming elections. The vice mayor, obviously, she holds a very special spot in my heart, and I'm sorry that she can't be here, but she was a true trooper of the police force and of me. She made me want to come to work and do a great job, because she basically reminded me of my grandmother, and I knew I needed to perform to the best of my ability to make her happy. So it was, it's been truly a pleasure to work for her. Madam Mayor, I can't, couldn't have asked for a better mayor to work for. You were always supportive. You weren't just going to hand the keys over to the car, but you were supportive of the police force and of me, and I really appreciate that. You were also a champion of the police force. When people would want to condemn us, you, I always noticed that you were willing to stand up and wait, tell them to wait till the whole story came out, and support us, even though you may not have known the whole story at the time. You would ask them to wait for the whole story to come out before you could condemn the police force. So on behalf of myself and my family, thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your service, you've been awesome.[1201.82][1201.82](APPLAUSE). And I must say that we are going to miss you, but we know that you're going to be, you're going to be around town, but you have really done a stellar job. You've done an outstanding job. Like you said, I just, I mean, I have a lot of trust in you, in you as chief, and in your people, and I attribute some of that to the Holocaust training, knowing that when you went out to do your job, each of you knew that your job was to protect our constitutional rights, and you did that well. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just a reminder that this Friday, 2:00 at Public Safety Building, we'll send Chief Fanning off in style and recognize his years of service. Again, Friday, just...
I just, I didn't hear the time, 2:00?
Oh, 2:00, 2:00. So if anybody would like to come out and recognize Chief Fanning as he departs the city, the public is certainly welcome.
Okay, thank you.
We are also creating a list of things to blame on him once he's gone.[1278.12][1278.12](LAUGHING). So if anybody has any ideas, we're available for that as well.
Bring your list along, right? Thank you so much, Chief, and to Monette also. We know that being the wife of a police officer can be very scary at times. You don't get to celebrate a lot of your children's birthdays together, you don't get to celebrate Christmas or other holidays, and when you kiss them goodbye, either the night shift or the morning shift, whenever they're working, you really don't know if you're going to see them again. So thank you for your perseverance and your support of him, so he could do a great job for the citizens. You're welcome. Okay. Any other people like to speak at the call to the public tonight? Thank you very much. So we have John Farnsworth, and hours for Aquatic Center at the rec center.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've been enjoying the rec center and the aquatic center, and we find that with our employment that we're not able to get there before 6:00 at night. And we like to do, as well as a lot of the other adults, we like to enjoy the lazy river in the hours of 6:00 and 8:00 in the evening. And recently, it's come to our attention that if even one young person wants to be up on that structure with the water going, with the water bucket draining down on it, that we cannot, even if there's five of us adults that would like to use the lazy river without getting water dumped or the water cannon hitting us, we have no say-so in that. And when we inquired about it, they told us that the ultimate direction for that is with the city council, so that's why we're here. So it's our concern, the bulk of the taxpayers probably work 8 to 5, Monday through Friday, and can't get to the rec center before 6:00 in the evening. And right now, the current hours are between 1:00 and 8:00 in the evening. The children can be up there and dump water, shoot us with water cannons, whatever their heart desires. We've met at least one adult who's already had that waterfall and give her a whiplash. Fortunately, she didn't press the issue, but there's a potential liability issue, not to mention potential ear infections, et cetera. So what we're hoping is that it's possible for the city council to give some direction to the aquatic center, that if the adults during the hours of 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. wish to have the lazy river without that water dumping on us, that that be something that can happen. So it could look like the hours for that structure with the water up above the lazy river is over at 6:00, so that the children have all the way from 1:00 till 6:00 to play with it all they want, and then after 6:00, the adults don't have to worry about having the water dumping on them. So that's the issue, that we are hoping that there can be some kind of progress on.
Some kind of a win-win for all, the children and the adults. So I would like to ask the city manager to meet with them and discuss this and see if you can find a win-win, so that the adults can use it and the children can use it also. And I think that you could figure that out.
We'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Can I just ask real quickly, if you don't mind?
Sure.
Have you brought this up before the Parks and Rec Commission?
We spoke with the, starting with the lifeguards, and they're the ones that told us that they can't stop the children. If the kids ask, they have to turn on the water.
Right.
And then, you know, we've tried getting a meeting with the Hezekiah, who's in charge of the aquatic center. We have not been able to.
He's gone.
He's been out of the office the holiday, and he was out again today. So, you know, our attempts to connect with him have not been successful so far. And so, you know, conveniently...
And we were told that it's up to you guys.
Yeah, we were told the decision ultimately rests with you.
Well, actually, the day-to-day operations of the city, according to city code, belong to the city manager. So it's actually the city manager's job to do that, but we really appreciate hearing from you, and we're...
Just for my own, it's like, I want to go to...
Exercise.
Exercise.
Right.
So I want to run in the water.
Right, the lazy river is great for that.
And so, but I get stressed out when the water starts pressing, I don't want to, you know, get my hair wet. I can't enjoy it, and I get all stressed out. What's the purpose of going?
We even have friends that are older adults, even though they're retired, that's the best time for them. And, you know, the other day, there was five of us adults wanting to use it, one child. It kept us out of it until that child was done.
Okay, well, the city manager will get a meeting together with you, and let's see, we have, do we have your contact? We had your email address.
Yeah, and phone, yes.
So if you would get that information, Matt, to the city manager, and best wishes in your discussions. All right, thank you for coming tonight, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anybody else for call to the public for something not on the agenda? If not, the approval of the minutes, the regular meeting of January 5th, 2016, and the special meeting of January 12th, 2016.
I move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Ilinski made the motion, Mr. Pratt seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda. Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one is new liquor license application submitted by Andrea LaCawitz, agent for Good Omen Bottling LLC located at 820 West Mingus Avenue. Item number two is new liquor license application submitted by Mark Lalouche, owner of the Steak and Stuff Restaurant and Tavern located at 1100 State Route 260, number 21. And item number three is a ward of bid for the city's off-site refueling services to SC Fuels, subject to approval of the final form of agreement by the city attorney. Are there any items that a member of the council would like to pull for discussion?
No.
Are there any items that a member of the public would like to pull for discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion, Mr. Howdige.
Yes, Madam Mayor, motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Mr. Howdige made the motion, Mr. Ilinski seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, new business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Resolutions number 2824, 2825, and 2826, appointing members to the Planning and Zoning Commission for new three-year terms, and resolution number 2827, appointing a member to the commission to fill the remainder of a three-year term which expires January 8th, 2017. Ms. Najan?
Madam Mayor, council members, as you stated, we need, again, four members for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Three members are existing and serving right now, and one seat was vacated by Phil Rosen. We need a new seat for that position. We need a new seat for that position. Currently, we have Ed Kyler serving as a chairman, and Robert Williams, vice chair, Judd Wasden, Gene Wilder, Raymond Cox, and Suzanne Pasleiko. Three members, they are up with their terms, Suzanne Pasleiko, and Gene Wilder, and Robert Williams. Except Suzanne, everybody else is on the audience for you if you have any questions to ask them. And we have two new applications from Thomas Goff and also from Thomas Narwood. Again, staff is requesting tonight for members for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So if we could get each member who is here to come up and tell the council why you want to serve and why you think that you would be good at serving. And so if you want to call them up? Aaron? One at a time or whatever? So why you want to serve and why you would be good. Some of you have already served, and so you're pretty aware of those answers. Hi, Gene. Ms. Wilder.
Ms. Mayor Jones and the council have been on the commission now for, I think, a full term or two, and I just find it makes me appreciate so much what goes on in the community and what it takes, how many people it takes, how many volunteers in many cases it takes. And it's just very rewarding. I've watched change happen in the communities where I've been a part of them, and good change. I learned how to be willing to negotiate, and that's invaluable to me in my life. So if there's a need and I could continue the service, I'd love to do that.
All right, so you're reapplying again?
Yes.
Okay.
I think I was told I needed to do that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is vice chair, Mr. Williams. Hello, Mr. Williams.
Madam Mayor, council. I want to thank you for the opportunity to, these past six years, to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. We've had a, been through quite a real estate recession, but I remember my first meeting six years ago was on the Mago statute issue at Biggs Union High School. It was quite an initiation to come on board. But we've, yeah, the past couple of years, we've been able to, and I served on the committee as well, for formulating the new general plan for the city of Cottonwood through year 2025. We've also been able to go in and start, begin the process of looking through our planning and zoning ordinances to update them, to clarify them. There was a lot of issues that some of our members, including myself, were unclear on what actions we could take. We're making some good progress on that. Look forward to continuing to do that with your blessing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Another existing commissioner, Suzanne Pasleiko, couldn't make it tonight, but normally we don't have any attendance issues with her somehow tonight. She wrote a letter, actually, excusing herself for tonight, but she's very much interested in the new position. And we have also two new members, not members, but new applicants, and I don't know them in the audience, Mr. Thomas Goff and also Thomas Narwood.
Okay, so if you would like to come up and share why you would like to serve and why you think you would be good at it.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tom Narwood. I very much appreciate the opportunity to apply and join the planning board for Cottonwood. I moved to Cottonwood in 1998, so I've been living here for approximately 17 years. Also have been a business owner in Cottonwood and also had a business in Jerome. My wife and I are very happy and love to live here. I had a similar position that you're offering in the township of Aquonic, New Jersey. I was on the planning board there for seven years and also was involved with just about everything on your job description and including also developing a master plan, part of a team who developed a master plan for Aquonic Township. So that's everything, you know, I can tell you. If you have any questions about my experience or life here in Cottonwood, I'd be happy to answer.
So have you followed the current Planning and Zoning Commission, and do you have any comments about the work they do, or have you taken any note of that?
No, I haven't, no.
Okay.
No, I read the papers and look at everything I can, but I haven't been attending the meetings at all.
Okay.
I've been pretty busy. I volunteer at Ollie at the Yavapai College.
Great.
I've been teaching there for several years.
Wonderful group.
Also have some hobbies that keep me quite interested.
And you were a chemical engineer? Is that, was that your occupation?
No, actually, I have a doctor's degree in organic, synthetic organic chemistry. I left industry and...
I know it's something to do with chemistry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Pharmaceutical industry.
Pharmaceutical industry, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Goff?
Madam Mayor, gentlemen. No, I thought it was a lady over here. My name is Ray Goff. I live on Montezorro Drive, Cottonwood, Arizona. I've lived here for a little over 30 years, and I've just recently retired from StanTech Consulting, engineering and architecture firm in Phoenix, after 25 years. And my wife recently passed away, and sitting around watching the boob tube all the time is not fun. So I thought I'd give a little time to the sea. So I made application for Planning and Zoning.
And have you noted anything about the current commission? Do you have any comments about their work?
Well, I'd rather not say at this point.
Okay, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam.
All right. Okay, so discussion. We have quite a few resolutions here, 28, 24, 25, 26, and 27. Okay, so discussion from the council. Mr. Ilinski?
Excuse me. I'm impressed with Mr. Narwood's experience, and I'd sure like to see him have a shot at serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, so any comments from that or any comments from members of the public on that?
I felt the same way.
From the application process?
Yeah, and of course, I have a softness in my heart because I went to the University of Vermont. I have a daughter.
So are you speaking of the term, the 2827 for him then, or which item?
I hadn't, I hadn't thought of which resolution to fix his name to, so I...
Well, some of them, I mean, are like, if they're incumbents, they're kind of attached to a resolution. Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I would recommend Mr. Narwood for 2827.
2827. Okay.
That will be filling the remainder of a three-year term.
Okay.
Can I make that motion?
Well, yeah, and I just want to say that I think Mr. Goff would also be very good. Whoever does not get a position will keep your application on file, and if another time, another opening comes up, we'll definitely give you a call and let you know about the opportunities, because I think there's more applicants tonight than there are positions.
Yeah, five and four.
We're quite blessed to have that happen. Okay, so you made a motion, or did you?
I will. I move to approve Resolution number 2827, appointing Thomas Narwood to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill the remainder of a three-year term that expires January 8th, 2017.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Pratt made the motion. Mr. Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Motion for Resolution number 2824.
Okay.
Inserting the name of Gene Wilder.
Okay, any second on that? So Mr. Howdegie made the motion. Mr. Pratt seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so 2825?
2824. Oh, yeah.
That was Gene, right?
I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay.
Excuse me.
That's okay.
I'll move to approve Resolution 2825, inserting the name of Mr. Williams.
Second.
Okay, so Mr. Ilinski made the motion. Mr. Pratt seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll go ahead and take 2826, because it has the most difficult to pronounce last name. I move that we approve Resolution number 2826, inserting the name Suzanne Poseliko. Poseliko? Pasleiko?
Okay.
As a matter of...
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Dowling made the motion. Mr. Pratt seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are those all of the resolutions? Did we get them covered? Okay, so we'll keep your application on file, and there may be opportunities coming up very soon. You never know. Okay, so city clerk, please read Resolutions number 2824, 2825, 2826, and 2827 by title only.
Resolution number 2824, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, appointing Gene Wilder, a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and establishing her term of office. Resolution number 2825, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, appointing Robert Williams, a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and establishing his term of office. Resolution number 2826, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, appointing Susan Poseliko, a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and establishing her term of office. And Resolution number 2827, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, appointing Thomas Narwood, Narwood, a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and establishing his term of office. Madam Mayor.
Okay, so if you would let IRS know to keep that application for Mr. Goff on file so that we can access it as the need arises. So thank you all for your time and what you do, and we appreciate each one of you for being here tonight. Thank you. Okay, Resolution number 2823, appointing a member to the library board to fill the remainder of a three-year term which expires January 21st, 2018.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. We had a vacancy on the library advisory board due to Nancy Trupiano moving out of the city limits. We received one applicant, and you all know her. So if you have any questions, I'd like to you to move to approve Kyla Allen to our library advisory board, and she is here if you have any questions.
So Ms. Allen, will you please come up and share with us? There always has to be a test. Share with us why you would like to serve. You have shared it on your application, but members of the public were not, did not get to hear that, so...
Well, I've been 20 days without coming to work at the city, and I couldn't do...
You couldn't stand it.
No, Vanessa actually approached me, and she let me know that they had a vacancy and they were interested. Back in ancient history, my actual first job with the municipality was at a library as a library technician. I've read the minutes for the last year, year and a half, whatever they've got up there. It's a busy group, but they only meet once a month. It's easy for me to serve. I can give them a unique perspective of knowing the inside of the city rather than the outside, and I think it's something I would have great fun doing and be very helpful on, and I love to serve.
Great. I just have one question. We do have like two positions on the board that someone outside the city can serve, but those are filled now, and so we need an inside-the-city person. Gotcha. So I think Kyla would be a great library board member, very accomplished. Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I think she'd be terrific. She works really well with people, and once again, I see Kyla Allen stepping up to volunteer, and we appreciate it. It'll be nice to see you around again.
Okay, so Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve Resolution number 2823, appointing Kyla Allen as a member of the library advisory board to fill the remainder of a three-year term which expires January 21st, 2018.
So Mr. Pratt made the motion. Mr. Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Deputy clerk, please read Resolution number 2823 by title only.
Resolution number 2823, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Kyla Allen, a member of the library board of the city of Cottonwood, and establishing her term of office. Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here tonight, all our great volunteers. Okay, the next item is request from Gary Rideout, owner of Vets for Hire, for a waiver of the application permit fees for building and conditional use permits for the building located at 125 South Sixth Street. Yes?
Madam Mayor, commissioners?
Ms. Najad.
Again, Gary Rideout applied in planning department to convert the building at, located at 125 South Sixth Street. Currently, it is vacant, and he would like to convert this one to office spaces and also turn it into temporary housing for homeless veterans. And we went through the CRB meeting, and...
And CRB stands for?
Code Review Board.
Thank you.
Studied that.
For the public.
And also, because of the planning issues, we have to have a conditional use permit which costs $350, and also converting internally this building into residential and offices, it was going to cost 500-plus building permit, so a total of $2,926 was the fees required by our department. And he was, he came and requested for the waiver, and I turned it to him for the details.
Okay. Mr. Rideout?
Thank you, Mayor, and city council. My company purchased a building on the old Charter School on 125 South Sixth Street approximately a month and a half ago, and we're currently in the process of taking 2,000 square feet and creating four sleeping rooms for transitional housing for homeless veterans and at-risk homeless veterans, as well as we're creating another room for really anyone in the community that is homeless or at risk of becoming homeless, whether they're veterans or non-veterans. So our project, we're, like I said, we're going to have four large sleeping rooms. We're going to have a kitchen and dining, community kitchen and dining area, and two large, two large full bathrooms as well. So we recently started a nonprofit, well, we actually started the nonprofit in 2014, we just didn't have any activity, under the name Adopt a Vet, Adopt a Vet, Inc. We filed for our 501(c)(3), excuse me, designation with the IRS. And the USDA role development, we're working with the USDA role development right now to, my company will sell the building to Adopt a Vet, Inc., the nonprofit. And so they're looking at financing the building and helping us with some grant dollars. We're estimating the construction approximately 80, 80 to $100,000. And so that's what we're asking for, to waive the building permit fee and the conditional use permit fee.
Discussion. Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I really appreciate what you've done for the veterans in our community. Again, I think we've really advocated for being a veteran-friendly community, and it's nice for us to be friends with companies that help the vets. I believe you started out in a small business development center.
Yes.
The city was able to help you there, and I think you guys have done a great job. I sense it's a nonprofit, and it does have to do with vets, and it does have to do with homeless, and I see them around. I support this.
My only question for council would be, would we want to set a precedence for not charging fees, or would we rather look for some other way to fund it more as... Or would we rather look for some other way to fund it more as we would donate to a nonprofit?
That's a good question.
Either way, it costs the same to the city, but how would the council think about that? If you wish to support this?
Yeah, I think we've always had a, shall we say, maybe not a policy, but we've looked at covering some of those costs when we've had, you know, notable projects. And really, the cost of this is...
Minimal.
Yeah, and considering the, the housing for at least, you know, a few people is, I think, a real big step.
Every little bit helps, right?
Yeah, definitely.
We waived or either mostly waived the building fees for the senior center when they did their last expansion project with the canopy and the solar. So, I think, I don't think we're setting precedents here.
Okay. So, you're fine with it coming out of planning and zoning?
Yeah, I think they do a great service to the community, so I support what they do.
Yeah, I understand the concern for not setting a precedent. I wouldn't want people to think it's, they can get a free ride from the council any time they want it, but this is a nonprofit, and so I, you know, I would also support this, provided, you know, the service that you're going to give to the community. But there is the Building Community Grant Program, too, that might be available for... No, would not be available.
This year's already, has already been allocated. You would have to apply this year, and it would be available till after July. I don't think too much will then be...
Is it?
Well, I mean, I think Tim's probably talking about further needs for the program. Is that correct?
Yeah, so it's after, that's correct. Is it after July then when that program opens up again? Next fiscal year?
The applications start next month, and then if, once it's allocated, it will be allocated till after July first of...
Okay. Okay, but the applications will be out next month for that. I mean, that's another good opportunity, though, to get some...
Yeah, is that the Community Development Block Grant?
No, that's a different fund. This is, that's through the, through NACOG. This is through the city of Cottonwood. It's, what's the actual title of it, so we can...
Building Community Grant.
Building Community Grants.
Thank you.
I wonder if that's going for construction, and they are going to apply for the grant. So, it might be...
So, I think, are there any comments from members of the public on this item? I think they have the...
I'd just add that, I have a dear father-in-law who passed away homeless on the street, who is a veteran, so we could definitely take better care of those guys.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion.
I move to waive the building permit and planning fees associated with the interior remodel and conditional use permit application submitted by Gary Rideout, Vets for Hire.
I'll second that.
Okay, so Mr. Pratt made the motion, Mr. Dowling seconded it, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your work and what you're doing to help vets.
Appreciate your work, yeah.
So, item number four is approval of the Cooperative Use of the Crane Elementary School District Number Thirteen Agreement with Stifel Nicholas, did I say it right?
Stiefel.
Stiefel, you, I know, that's Stiefel Nicholas and Company, Inc., to provide the city with financial advisory services in connection with the city's application for a loan from the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona to refinance the city's twenty-two thousand six water system revenue bonds and to fund a new drinking water capital project. Mr. Rodriguez?
They put my name on this, and this is actually Jeff's item. He's, he did all the leg, the research and chasing this one down. We need to enter into agreement as we proceed with the, with refinancing of the two thousand and six bonds. And in order to do that, we needed to get some sort of agreement with, with Stifel Nicholas. And what we did is we went ahead and located a cooperative use agreement through Crane Elementary School District Number Thirteen, through the Strategic Alliance of Volume Expenditures, we call it SAVE. So, we could contract with Stifel Nicholas as our city financial advisor. All of you are probably aware through the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen refinance with WIFA that Grant Hamel has handled it. Grant Hamel's been with us, I've been here sixteen years, going on seventeen, and he's been with us well...
Mr. Jones was there.
There you go. So, he's been with us for some time. And one of the reasons we wanted to get a cooperative agreement was because it keeps, allows us, keeps us within our purchasing guidelines, and it keeps, allows us to bring on Grant again to help us out with the refinancing of this two thousand and six bond. And he has acknowledged of the city of Cottonwood, he's been with us, he helped us with, he got a loan for the rec center, he's helped us with the WIFA loans when we did the six million dollar expansion of the wastewater treatment plan, he helped us with the MPC bindings, both the two thousand and four, two thousand and six, the two thousand and fifteen WIFA, so he's been with us for quite some time. So, with that being said, you know, I'll entertain any questions concerning the agreement. And if I can't answer them, Jeff is here to help out.
So, questions? Oh, I guess we're, I thought Terrence was done, he's just back there.
I've got a question, since nobody else does. The, the way it's spelled out, it's, it's, I'm one, are we getting the two? We have two different items on the agenda. One is to approve Stiefel, Stifel?
Stiefel. Stiefel.
Nicholas and Company to handle this transaction. But then, the next item, we're actually talking about the...
The resolution to enter in, to go ahead and get on the project priority list with WIFA.
Okay, I guess what I'm after is, we're talking about a, a sum and two projects to be covered by that sum. And we're going to have that actual discussion on the next item.
On the next item, correct.
So, how do we, if we approve this, how do we unapprove it? If we don't approve both of those items as part of the next item?
You can approve this item, and if the other one doesn't go through, we're no worse for wear, because we've got him, we would, we've signed an agreement with him, and it would not go anywhere.
Okay.
So, this item is just, sorry, I don't want to interrupt.
No, no, go ahead.
The vehicle that would move the next item forward.
Right, correct.
Okay, I understand.
So, we're refinancing the bonds, and this is also, isn't this also the transaction that will put, make Clarkdale separate?
We will talk about that at the next, the next session. What we've been looking at right now is to get an agreement with Stifel Nicholas so that we can go ahead and proceed from that. And the next item will be discussion of the actual refinancing.
Okay.
So, if I can jump on up. This item will allow us to engage Grant's firm to be the city's financial advisor to seek the loan. The next item will be authorization to seek the loan, and then we'll be coming back to you at subsequent meetings for, for other items related.
And just to add on to that, if the council would decide not to seek the loan, obviously, we have no need for their services.
Yeah, my question was, was that the, the motion is very specific in what it's asking for, and that's, that's where my question is, is if we don't fulfill both of the terms of the motion, are we still? So, I just want to make sure we weren't getting the discussion in front of the approval, that's all.
No, we would be contracting, if the services aren't provided, we would not be, obviously, paying.
Compensation is, is paid at, when the loan closes. Okay. Thank you.
Well, in that case, I'll go ahead and move to approve the cooperative use of the Crane Elementary School District Number Thirteen contract through the Strategic Alliance of Volume Expenditures Purchasing Group for financial advisory services from Stifel Nicholas and Company, Inc., to obtain a WIFA loan for a water system capital project and to refinance the city's outstanding water system revenue bonds, two thousand and six.
Second.
Okay, so, Mr. Ilinski made the motion, Mr. Pratt seconded it. Is there any other discussion by council on this item? Are there any comments from the public on this item? Yes?
I know...
If you would, if you would come up to the lectern, please? Yes, he'll get, he'll get it.
My name's Phil Turbell. I noticed in the cooperative purchase agreement that was attached to this item, a highlighted blank. This agreement amount shall not exceed. And it was highlighted in the agreement, and it was left open, and I didn't know if there was...
I saw that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Madam Mayor, I can speak to that, too. I, I saw that, too. But also, if you look at the, the contract Mr. Hamel's firm has with the Crane District, his, their fee structure is, is pretty comprehensive. And I think that blank can be filled in based on the, the services performed and, and the final amount of the loan.
Okay. Okay, so, we had a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving to the next item, resolution number twenty-eight, twenty-eight, application for WIFA twenty-sixteen.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This basically authorized the submission of the application for a drinking water revolving fund loan from the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona, WIFA. We, this, this allows us to get on the project priority list, as I mentioned just a few minutes ago. With me, I have Grant Hamel from Stifel Nicholas, that will go through a presentation of, on the refinancing from the current two, two thousand and six NBC bond to a two thousand and sixteen WIFA loan.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the manager of Bartash, Grant Hamel, managing director with Stifel Nicholas.
Stiefel, thank you.
Very easy to mispronounce, but thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, first of all, for your retention of our firm's services in regards to this proposed transaction. I've got a brief presentation to go over with you tonight that really provides you just a brief overview of this refinancing process. Some of these slides will look very familiar to you because this is really part two of a refinancing effort that was really started a few years back when the city recognized that with regards to bonds that were issued about almost ten years ago to acquire the assets of Cottonwood Water Works and to finance some of the improvements to the system, those bonds that were issued are approaching their call date, where investors recognize and understand that there is a risk that their bonds are going to be called and retired through a refinancing by the community. So, we're at that juncture now where we're entertaining utilizing a loan from WIFA to refinance bonds that were issued by the city back in two thousand and six. Those bonds have a ten-year call provision, so on July one, two thousand and sixteen, those bonds are eligible to be called and retired. What I'm going to go over with you this evening, Madam Mayor, pretty much resembles as the transaction undertaken by the city last year for bonds that were issued in two thousand and four that did not entail a joint financing with the town of Clarkdale. This transaction does, which makes it a little bit more complicated with regards to just coordinating the refinancing effort with the town, which they are interested in pursuing as well. Our firm has been retained by the town. They, last week, passed a resolution to go forward with their application to WIFA to refinance their portion of the bonds that I'm going to speak to you about tonight. So, with that introduction, I'd be happy to entertain any questions from the council before I get started.
Anything you want to know before he starts, Mr. Ilinski?
So, if I understand you correctly, Clarkdale and Cottonwood both are simultaneously entertaining refinancing the...
That's correct. And as Rudy mentioned, tonight's action is simply to go forward with an application. It does not bind the city to do anything with WIFA at this point. If the council decides to go forward with the application, and if the WIFA board approves the project, then there would be a resolution sometime in the spring that would actually authorize the city to enter into a loan agreement with WIFA at that time. So, there'll be a subsequent resolution to the one this evening.
And I apologize, Madam Mayor, and I think this is a good time to probably remind the council that the city went out in two thousand and six and issued the debt for the entire purchase. And so, it's, there's a joint debt, but the city's name is on the obligations. And in order for this transaction to proceed, both the city and the town would have to be able to obtain the funds to retire the bonds, and then we would be able to, to separate out, because as the council will recall, the town is obligated to the city, the city is obligated to the bondholders for the full amount.
So, if I could just make this clear, is, is just crystal clear? So, if Clarkdale is unable then to obtain financing, then we won't be able to go through with this transaction?
I don't believe we would.
Okay.
So, they weren't able to bond in two thousand and six, but they do have a record now of making payments, and so will that help them obtain the credit that they need to do this?
Yes, and unlike accessing capital in the public markets, which is what the city has historically done and what the city did do in two thousand and six, this is an application to a state agency that has different...
Criteria.
Requirements of the borrower that I would say are a little bit less stringent than the capital markets and much more cost-effective. And I wouldn't say the town was precluded from accessing the capital markets, but the decision was made at the time that if they participated in a financing that the city led, their cost of funds would be much less than what they could get independently, just because of their size and the fact that they had no history in, in the utility area. So, it was basically an accommodation by the city at that time to add to its bond programs sufficient monies to basically lend the towns that they could acquire their portion of the system and make improvements to it.
Okay.
And, and as far as I know, that arrangement, at least financially, with town payments, debt service payments to the city have, have been fine. But my understanding has always been there was a future desire to segregate the financing between the two communities.
Right.
This transaction with the towns pending transaction with WIFA would accomplish that as well. And, and tonight, I'm just going to basically give you a quick overview of what the estimated perceived benefits are to doing this transaction. Madam Mayor, members of council, as you know, WIFA is a state agency that finances the construction rehabilitation and improvement of drinking water, wastewater, wastewater reclamation, and other wallet water quality facilities and projects. WIFA lending is aimed primarily at new projects and improvements, not debt refinancing. That is not considered part of their mission, which is to improve infrastructure for water and wastewater. They will accommodate a refinancing request, which is what they did for the city last year, as long as it's accompanied by a request for a new money project. So, we really could not approach them with simply a refunding request because they don't see that as contributing to the infrastructure for water and wastewater projects in the state. So, the staff has worked to identify a project, just as it did last year, to include in the application, which we'll discuss with you this evening. System owners and operators are required to submit an application to WIFA for inclusion on the project priority list, which Rudy mentioned earlier. Funding for the loan will come at a subsequent WIFA board meeting. So, the, the date that we're looking for the WIFA board to consider our application is on February seventeenth. Now, Madam Mayor, members of council, just to give you a quick overview of what the current debt situation is, this series of columns underneath this box that says twenty-three, nine sixty-five, this represents the city's portion of the outstanding debt that was issued in two thousand and six. And as you can see, it totals about a little over fourteen million dollars. The town's portion of the two thousand and six bonds totals a little over six million. So, the total outstanding debt to be refinanced is twenty-point-one million. And as you can see, under call features, that debt is callable on July one, two thousand and sixteen at par. The average interest rate on those... The average interest rate on those obligations when they were issued in 2006 is 4.91%. This column right here represents the loan that the city entered into last year for the refinancing. So this is the Series 2015 WIFA loan. And as you can see, that transaction was executed at an interest rate of 2.2%. And as you will recall, that generated pretty substantial debt service savings to the city at that time. I mentioned earlier the new project that has to accompany this application. What staff identified was a project on State Route, I'm sorry, that should be 260, which would be a well site and water line construction project with an estimated cost of 1.94 million. Here's a description of that project that was included in the application. "The proposed water line and well site improvements would be capable of supplying future commercial development along State Route 260 and add a badly needed level of redundancy to a currently weak portion of the city's water system, estimated project cost just under $2 million." Now, how this program would work, let me go over with you what the estimated flow of funds would be. So this box represents the sources of funding to complete the transaction as I've described. We would have the proceeds of a WIFA loan. We would also have access to the money that was set aside in 2006 in a debt service reserve fund. That effectively would be freed up as part of the retirement of those 2006 obligations. And then also, what would be a source of money are debt service payments from the town of Clarkdale that the town is currently paying the city toward their obligation that's due on July 1 of 2016. So they're going to continue to make those payments because this transaction will take several months to complete. So this isn't changing any of their obligation. They will continue to make payments and those payments will be used by the city to refinance the debt. So at the time of the loan execution, assuming WIFA approves the loan, most of the proceeds are going to be going into an escrow account. This money would be held by a trustee bank and be used to retire the city's portion of the Series 2006 water obligations of a little over $14 million. Secondly, roughly $2 million will go into this project for State Route 260 that I described earlier. Third, there will potentially be some proceeds that are deposited to a debt service reserve that WIFA requires. This is a reserve that can be funded over a five-year period of time, similar to the requirement of the loan that was executed last year. And then finally, professional fees for legal work and financial advisor would be paid from the loan proceeds, so there'd be no out-of-pocket costs to the city to complete the transaction. Now, you recall last year that there is a tremendous benefit in reducing the interest cost by doing the transaction. I'd like to go over with you what the estimated debt service savings are this time around. And I'll suggest that everything I'm going to present to you is subject to change. It's based upon interest rates in the future that we can't obviously predict, but at this point in the market, there's very favorable interest rates still available and we anticipate there to be pretty significant debt service savings to the city of doing this. This column here, Madam Mayor, members of the council, this represents the debt service on an annual basis that is currently being paid by the city for its share of the 2006 bonds. This debt service is what is proposed to be replaced with the proceeds of a WIFA loan that we're estimating at this point to be executed at a rate of a little over 2%. You'll see the total debt service of the WIFA loan component as compared to what is being paid now. The estimated annual savings shown in this column, 5, totals almost $6 million over the life of the loan. If you look at that on a present value basis, it comes out to a little over $5 million. But what we like to do is adjust this present value figure with some of the cash contributions that I mentioned earlier, such as money that's coming out of your reserve fund and the debt service account from the town of Clarkdale, to where the estimated net present value savings is about $3.6 million. Now, what are the program benefits? Just as they were before, substantial net debt service savings, estimated $4.5 million over the life of the loan. More system revenues get retained for capital improvements and for maintaining coverage. As you'll recall, coverage on net revenue to debt service is a very important rating agency criteria in rating your outstanding debt. WIFA offers the city a subsidized loan rate well less than the 2006 obligation rate. So the rate that we expect them to be able to offer you will be a subsidized AAA rate that is over 50% less than what you're paying now. And as before, the new project may qualify for forgivable principal from WIFA. As you will recall, last year, as part of our application, the city did receive a grant on the project that was financed through that loan application. So the 1.94 million dollar project could get a grant assigned to it. We don't know how much that grant might be, but that may be part of the benefits of going forward with this program. Now, a timetable of what to expect going forward following tonight's consideration of the resolution is that on February 17, the WIFA board will meet to consider adding the Cottonwood project to the 2016 project priority list. In the spring of 2016, the city council will consider a resolution to enter into a WIFA loan agreement. At that point, we'll have a much better understanding of what the interest rates are, what the savings are, et cetera. In the April-May timeframe, the WIFA board will meet to approve the loan. And then in May-June, again, will finalize the loan sizing, structure, legal documents, establish the subsidized loan rate. In that same timeframe, the holders, the investors of your 2006 bonds will be notified that their bonds are about to be called and retired. Your bond contract from 2006 requires a minimum 30-day notification to those investors. And then finally, at loan closing, the net loan proceeds are deposited into an escrow account to retire the 2006 obligations and to a project account for the 260 water line project. And Madam Mayor, members of council, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions if I have.
Mr. Pratt?
I have a couple of comments. First of all, I think this is a good thing. And if we do approve Resolution 2828 tonight, which I believe it is, we're not committing the city to anything. All we're doing is saying, go ahead and apply for the loan. But I think if we do get the loan, it's a good thing for one. For a couple of reasons, we could save some money. And by doing the infrastructure on 260, that's economic development right there. We're always talking about economic development, and I know there are businesses interested in those properties on 260, but they shy away when they find out we don't have the infrastructure. So I think it would be a good thing. And again, tonight, all we're doing is saying, go for the loan. We're not committing ourselves to anything.
Good point. Comments? Mr. Riddensky?
Mr. Hamel, you said that the loan would be about a little over 2% from WIFA. Does that change?
That surprisingly has been pretty consistent since last spring. The rate was 2.2%. The credit markets have continued to be very favorable for borrowers, not so much for savers, but for borrowers. And with the recent stock market volatility unrest in China with their economy, the Middle East, there continues to be investor interest in safer assets, which has kept prices for bonds up, interest rates down. The Federal Reserve, however, has indicated they're going to steadily increase the benchmark interest rate throughout this year. So the expectation is, at our firm and at other firms, is that interest rates are gradually going to rise this year. But we anticipate most of that to occur in the second half of the year. And we don't think the Federal Reserve will act anytime soon in light of what's happening now in the stock market. That's now off, I think, about 8%, you know, 9% just for the year. So I think they're not going to want to spook the markets anymore and try and jack rates up too prematurely. So we're in a very favorable interest rate environment that, you know, we don't know in the next couple of months where that could go. But I would say a rate in the 2% to 2.25% range is a very fair estimate.
But once we secure the loan, is that subject to change after?
No, that's a fixed rate loan. It too is a loan that can be called in 10 years if economics makes sense for the city to do that. I don't think the economics will ever be there to refinance this. I'd say the savings that, the savings potential of your bond is greater, I would say, than any debt refinancing I've seen in Arizona for 25 years. Not the dollar volume, but just the percentage of savings to what, you know, the amount that you're borrowing, because effectively you're cutting your interest rate in half, a little more than half. I don't see any financial downside to doing it. But as Rudy and staff knows, when you work with a state agency, they've got their own requirements on the new project, environmental reviews, Davis Bacon, some other things that we had to deal with last year. And that adds a little bit of extra cost potentially to the 260 project, but in the long run, those costs are nominal compared to the savings that you're able to get because they're, as a, they're a AAA rated agency, so they borrow money very cheaply, and then they have reserves that can further buy down that rate. And the city probably qualifies for a subsidized rate beyond that and potentially a grant that they'll, that they'll volunteer or hopefully put forth at the time the loan is executed to say, here's a check for a half a million dollars or a million dollars to apply towards 260. I forget the amount that they gave us last year.
$550,000.
It was 550 for, I think it was a million to...
For a million project, for a million dollar project.
A million dollar project. So they won't commit to that now, but there's a good chance of getting that grant that can further reduce the cost of the new money piece. So it's, I honestly, Mayor, did not see any downside to this. I gave the same presentation to the town last week. They unanimously voted to proceed with the application. And if you decide to go forward, it would be nice to have some representation at the WIFA board meeting on the 17th, because generally they like to see municipal support. There perhaps someone from the city council to speak in favor of the application and appreciate their consideration of this project.
Thank you. Any comments from members of the public? Yes, Ms. Garadis? If you would, if you would please come up to the...
Where's this water line going? It's going out 260, right?
There's actually a water line and a well, I believe.
Can you tell me what commercial properties we have one mile out on 260?
That's the point. We don't have any yet, but this will allow us to have some out there.
Okay, is there a land trade I'm not aware of because one mile out, it's all forest service property?
Maybe I can straighten that out. This would be a line that essentially would go from CVS down to Goddard. And not only would it create a water line there, but it would create some redundancy that we don't have in that area, particularly to serve some of our customers in the Verde Villages.
So redundancy meaning it's extra and we don't really need it?
Redundancy meaning that it's a backup. If there's a water main break somewhere else, we have a backup so that customers don't lose water.
Don't approve this. It's a waste of money. You guys are going to spend 2.4 million dollars, okay, to save 1.6 when you look at it. You guys got to start thinking about these things. You got to start looking at what's going on, the big picture. You're building a water line that is not going to serve any new customers.
Thank you. Any comments?
Who's next?
Mr. Trubell would like to speak.
Yes, Mr. Trubell?
I did want to ask, I heard Rudy make the presentation before the public. When the bonding company required a 135% excess debt service coverage to support the bonds, that we needed a water rate increase to support the bonds. Would it be this council's opinion that if we saved this money, that we would accredit that back to the water users?
Can I answer that? Honestly, no. It doesn't work that way. But it basically does, as every year, we'll save $250,000. And with that, basically, if we don't credit it back, it actually just provides some sort of relief for future rate increases is what it does. We can't, there's no way to go out and provide a credit for each and every one of the different water users. All it does is, the following year, it subsidizes or actually eases the increase. Now, mind you, the 1.35 that we've talked about before, we have mentioned in council in the past, we're pushing that well over two times the coverage, and we'll probably be pushing it higher than that. Because the 1.35, all it does is barely cover our debt service, and that 3.35 that we have left over is what little we can put aside. And right now, we're at a point where we need to develop our reserves for the water company. We are, every time we have an issue with the water company, we're not talking thousands of dollars, we're talking tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars whenever we have a problem with any of our wells and our lines are getting more and more expensive every year to supply. So we're trying to build up our reserves in that particular area. This will go a long way to help us reserve and keep those rates from going higher. When I proposed the rates this last year, I can't begin to presume that we're going to get anything from the wastewater, from the WIFA. So when I did a projection this year, and if you looked at the charts, it doesn't assume that we're going to get it. It's just the 2006, 2006 bonds were contained in all those charts because I can't make a projection on something that might happen. I have to go on projections on something that has already happened. And like, again, everything I do is a picture in time. Next week, it's something else. A year from now, it's a whole different picture.
So Rudy Field, Mr. Rodriguez. So WIFA has a lower debt service coverage ratio, doesn't it? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Twomley?
As you know, three of us were at the last WIFA board meeting when they suggested that you lower the outside water rate if you intended to come back from that loan. What is your comment about that?
Well, look at our rate studies and you'll understand. So can you please get one of the studies to Ms. Twomley?
I read it carefully and I also looked at the EPA guideline on affordability of water. Our outside water rate is the highest almost in Arizona. So I think it's going to be a hard argument to say that the income of the outside area can sustain more than 2% of the gross income per year spent on utilities.
Thank you.
And Mayor Council, she may be right about the 2%, however, it is by no means the highest in Arizona. Just looking at the rate study that we did this year and the presentation we did, we were pretty much in the ballpark. We were on the higher end on the outside, but that's only northern Arizona. Believe me, there's a lot of other cities that I did not poll that were not inside that survey that are considerably higher than those that I had polled.
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, again, I think it's really important to remember tonight that we will have much more time to rethink this. All we're doing is approving, going for the loan, we're not committing the city to anything. So if there are compelling reasons not to go forward with the loan after we apply, we cannot go forward. But I think there's compelling reasons to go forward with it. Ultimately, we'll be saving the city some money and, again, be a big driver for economic development in the city. That area out there is prime for development. There are companies that would like to be out there, but they back off because there's no infrastructure.
There's no land. They can't file that way.
Excuse me, please. Excuse me, please.
That's the best.
Please stop.
Anybody else want to speak? Mr. Trebell, did you get the answer you were looking for? Because I may be able to give it to you.
We projected a 5% increase for the next five, six, seven years in our water rates with no relief from this being considered, I don't believe. And it would appear that we may have to relook at that rate increase schedule that I know that we did what you call the leveling of the rate because we're...
No.
That's wastewater.
That's wastewater, I'm sorry. But I think it's something that needs to be considered, because I think that we've used bonding companies to beat up the rate payer, and now that we're looking at bonding companies to bring relief to the rate payer, I'm seeing really...
I think what Mr. Rodriguez was trying to get to is you've got to look at the loan payment as an ongoing expense. And every year that that changes, the rate that is established using those expenses will also change. So if the city does save money moving forward, then that obviously would be a factor in reestablishing that rate as it moves forward as well. So what we did the other night wasn't to establish five years of rates. It was to establish the rate for the next year with a look at how that trend would continue over the next five years. So theoretically, any money we save at this end will directly translate back to a savings, and the city would absorb that or pass that on to the rate payers in a lesser rate being pushed forward. So I think that pretty much sums that.
I just don't want to see that debt service relief drift away into another category.
Well, and so I'll get to my concerns with this whole thing. I love that we're creating a creative way to help Clarkville take ownership of their own debt, and I think this will be good for them. It's good for us. It kind of lets both of us have our own future without having to rely on the other one to help or to be participating in that. So I think that's a great part of this process. And I love that the city can save money. I mean, I was 100% in favor of this last refinancing that we went through. They did a great service, do a great service, and really was appreciative that WIFA did step in and help us pay some of that cost of... I think we used the funds to put in water lines on Mingus Avenue. I think that was the job, was it not?
I think so.
That we were putting those funds to... What I have a problem with with this whole package, and I understand what Mr. Pratt was saying about we have time to restructure this, but I don't think we do. We're setting ourselves on a path of, on one hand, saving money and, on the other, adding right back on to the debt load that we currently have at the city. And it's almost a step backwards in my mind. We're saving money on one end, and those should be going back to the rate payer as a reduction in rates. But we're now taking what savings we would get and throwing it right back into more capital expenditure that will keep the cost and the loan right where it was. And we won't be lowering the bill because we're adding to the debt load that the water customer will pay moving forward. And also that we're doing this on, or at least proposing it for a project that I don't remember ever discussing since I've been on the council. You know, this is a $2.5 million expenditure, and yet we haven't, as a group, even talked about whether this is something we see as being a viable need for the community or for the water system. So those two things bother me. So I just... And I hate being put in a situation where it's not a win-win, and I'm not sure this is a win-win, but...
Maybe I could... I'll just... I understand the concern about that, but I think that that portion of infrastructure improvement has been on a list, I believe. I think we've actually covered it in our yearly retreats. But it always... It's always been something that was not highly prioritized, because a lot of the times, the funding wasn't... It was kind of like, well, no funds, no priority. So I think that they probably had to, you know... And I think that we can't really pursue this option without including some manner of infrastructure improvement to qualify for the loan. So I think that, you know, in a situation like this, if you were to, you know, use an analogy of your, you know, of a home, if you're going to get to refi your 30-year, you know, adjustable rate mortgage to a 15-year fixed, that's sort of a no-brainer for most folks or something like that. And if, as a, you know, a requirement of that, they said, "Well, you need to put a new roof on the house." Well, you know, maybe we can figure that out. But I think that trying to separate the two really just negates even doing anything. And if we don't do anything, we're going to spend $22 million just sitting here thinking about it, you know, instead of actually making a systemic change to our debt load situation that we could actually make some progress with. I see the concern about that. But I've actually, prior to my council work, I worked on several projects. It may seem like there's nothing out in that area. It's a barren corridor. But there are actually several properties. I know this for a fact, because I've actually done engineering on several of them that are sort of there. You know, there've been a lot of interest. But again, once they start to look at what they're going to have to do to improve the property to work it, that does set people back. I know there's a piece of property right there near Goddard Road to the north of the Goddard Wash. So there are a few of those out there. And in a situation where we're dealing with this utility, I know that redundancy can seem like an unnecessary expense, but it's only unnecessary until somebody's... Until a well in that area goes out and people don't have water.
Or there's a fire.
Or a fire, you know, fire flows. Through the establishment of a lot of this infrastructure that we've done as far as adding, especially out in the county area specifically, the city has added a large number of fire hydrants. And that actually allowed brother-in-laws of firefighters out there, and they were actually able to lower everybody's insurance rates out in that area because of the additional number of fire hydrants and the improved fire flows and the addition of the variable pump drives that maintain the lines and prevent water hammer. So, you know, those are a lot of things that go back into it. So I think that we're probably not going to find a better financing deal. And if we have to do some infrastructure improvement to get a good financing deal, I think we're still ahead on that, because we'll probably have to do that infrastructure eventually anyway when it fails. So, you know, recently, we had an outage out in Verde Village, I think, where a well died or had a financial electrical failure, a catastrophic electrical failure, and nobody really noticed it. A lot of people said, "I never even knew it," because we had redundancy. So I think that redundancy is only an extravagance until you need it. Then it's a dire concern and emergency. So I think that if we can establish redundancy, improve infrastructure, save money, I think that it's at least worth going...
Promote safety.
Promote safety. It's worth considering that, and, you know, maybe we can discuss it more as time goes by. But at this point, it seems like no matter how you feel about the debt or water rates, to ignore this opportunity to adjust that and maybe put off more increases or slow the rate of increase over time, if we have the ability to do so with the savings, you know, like Rudy says, this is a point in picture in time. You can't bet today on savings you might not get tomorrow. So we've got to identify it as the snapshot. Moving ahead, you know, it's up to you guys to keep all of us accountable for the savings and saying, "Hey, remember that savings? Let's keep the rates down." And, you know, I have a feeling Mr. Trebell had no problem reminding us of such. So as that, you know, that's just my opinion on that part of it and trying to integrate all the options that we had going on.
And it would really be... No, no, you do not have permission to speak. You have to get permission. No. Well, if you would like to speak, please come up and do so appropriately. This is a meeting where we treat you respectfully, and I would ask that you provide respect also.
Do you realize how close we are to bankruptcy? Do you realize that?
That is not correct. That is not correct at all.
Okay, you're sure. $77 million, $58 million in debt, salaries that are equal to the sales tax. Please wake up. Please wake up.
Thank you. Do you have any comments, Mr. Rodriguez?
I'm not sure where this keeps coming up about bankruptcy. We're not... Nowhere near bankruptcy. This city will always come back to our council with a balanced budget, even if we have to trim off capital infrastructure requests and have to trim off salaries. There is no reason why we should be talking, saying that we're bankrupt, because we're not. Okay. Well, a big portion of the debt service that we have happens to be the water company, which is totally separate from our general fund. That's one of our biggest ones. And as you may recall, the... All the other debt that we have, a lot of our city... A lot of the improvements that we have have been needed from year to year. We needed the streets. We needed the water companies, and we've done a great job with those. They're better than they've ever been.
Done a lot of conservation that would have never been done. A lot of quality of life issues, reduced our insurance rates because of the improvements that we've done, our citizens' insurance rates.
Now, I'm not saying that we're not struggling, because we are struggling. That $9.6 or $9.5 million that we just got saddled with from Public Safety Personnel Retirement System is not favorable to us.
And so Prescott has $66 million?
$60-plus million.
And Bisbee has what?
I'm not aware of what maybe got...
Okay. So, I mean, and how far ahead did you know that this was going to happen to all the cities, all 91 cities and towns that have public safety retirement? How soon did you know this was going to happen?
We knew that it was going to happen several years ago. To be honest, we didn't know to the magnitude of what it was going to be several years ago. When we were first looking at this, the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System was funded 100%, well over 100%. It wasn't until we actually started getting our numbers in the last year or so that we started realizing the impact.
And so is this unique to the city of Cottonwood?
No, this is not... Every city is being hit hard over this one.
And some way harder than we are.
And others are doing some such things as they're raising their sales tax, or raising property taxes, or raising fees to cover some of this cost. As I've mentioned in the past, we're hoping that possibly the legislature might pass some sort of pension obligation requirement that might allow us to go ahead and fund for this, because the interest rate that we're going to have to pay if we don't have any kind of relief from the legislature will probably be close to 7.35%.
So they don't allow us to even...
At this point, we could borrow.
Without legislation. So if we wanted to pay it off at a low rate, we couldn't do that at this point.
Why are we talking about retirement safety? Why is that the part of the conversation?
It's kind of getting off on a tangent, and I understand. The thing is that the statement about being bankrupt is totally false from whoever is spreading it out there. You know, the city of Cottonwood has to pass a balanced budget to our council. That's a state requirement. And every year, I go back and I beat up on my fire, on my PD, on my city manager, on parks, over trying to get, make sure that these budgets come balanced. And every year, I come with you and I tell you the kind of cuts we've had to do, and I give you listings if you'd like to go back to those listings by me. But we're far from being bankrupt. We're struggling. There's no doubt. What other small municipality hasn't cut ours or cut out capital? And we're one city that is living off of a 3% without a property tax, and we're a full-service city with a fire, an airport, with a sewer, and water, all of it rolled up into one. We're all paying it out of that 1%, 3% sales tax, so...
Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I think, again, I stress, we're not committing the city to anything. I'm not saying we're doing it if we approve it tonight. And I'd like to read something that is in the packet, and I think it makes sense and it answers some of the questions. "If authorized by council and funded by WIFA, the loan will enable the city to retire and refinance the revenue bonds issued in 2006 at a reduced interest rate and save the city a substantial amount of money over the remaining terms of those bonds." And currently, it's estimated about $2 million.
But we saw that it could be even more, much more, double. Double plus savings.
And provide funding for a high-priority water system capital project. So again, if we vote tonight to approve it, we're just saying, "Go for the loan and then come back to us."
I think it's time for a motion. We've been beating this up, spinning our wheels here. We're not getting anywhere. The explanation is the explanation. It's been repeated many times.
I agree with you.
I'd invite somebody on that side over there to make a motion.
Or would you like to, Mr. Houdig? You don't want to make a motion.
I move to approve Resolution 2828 to authorize the Administrative Services General Manager to submit an application for a drinking water revolving fund loan from the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona in an amount not to exceed $16 million and to take any additional action necessary to complete and submit the application and cause the city to be placed on WIFA's project priority list.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Pratt made the motion. Mr. Dowling seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Fine. Any opposed?
I abstain.
Okay. So for the record, we have one... We have five votes for yes and one abstention. Okay, so that is a resolution. So Deputy Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2828 by title only.
Resolution Number 2828, a resolution of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the submission of an application for a drinking water state revolving fund loan from the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona. Madam Mayor?
Thank you. And thank you to the council members for being so patient, for taking time out to hear the public. I appreciate you for that. Okay, so claims and adjustments?
Move to pay the claims.
Second.
So Mr. Garrison made the motion. Mr. Edelinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, the mayor made the motion. Mr. Garrison seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.